So you wrote them?
Yeah.
Yeah, everything's down.
Yeah. You guys take it up? Did you get it up to me this year?
No, next summer it looks like.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's got some thought now about it.
Oh, good. I know you was gonna think about what they did this far. They have looked at it now.
Didn't we do Atwood already?
What's that?
Didn't we already do it?
What?
Atwood.
No, it was there for the, um, street acceptance bond reduction.
No, I mean, well.
Because we played with the bond. We reduced it down. And then whether the drainage thing from the rain, what happened this time? Because it rained like hell a couple of weeks ago.
I haven't been around, I've been busy. So, um... We can accept the road.
Well, it's the town that accepts the road.
Well, we make the motion to move it to.
Move it to that?
The meeting for December, I guess.
Yeah, what happened to, um, the drainage on it, though?
Rennie signed off on it.
Oh, we did?
Yeah.
Oh, wow. Okay.
Okay.
Mic on, guys.
All right, here we go.
Motion open.
Motion open the meeting?
So motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right. Uh, first up is the, uh, approval of the meeting minutes for...
You want to call the vote? If we just call it?
Oh, all in favor? It's been a while, sorry.
Aye.
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 Aye. Excuse me, Greg?
Yes.
I think you should, uh, introduce a new member to...
Oh, um, we have a new member tonight, DJ. Say hello to...
Hello, everyone. Thanks for having me.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
So, for first up is the approval of the minutes for October 5th, 2021 meeting. Uh, I have a motion.
So motion.
A second?
Aye.
Me.
Bob.
Whatever.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, first up, uh, tonight is, uh, Atwood Estates. Uh, status of street acceptance and bond reduction. What do we have for that, Rebecca?
Um, in your packet, you, uh, excuse me, uh, Mr. Chair, in your packet you will find the, uh, layout plan and also the as-built that has been reviewed by TEC. We have a sign-off from the Highway Department regarding the acceptance of the roadway. It was noted that the curving was removed from the plan, um, as approved, and therefore it's not an ideal design, but it is stabilized and he is okay with the acceptance of the roadway. Uh, we also have received the inclusionary fee from the developer, so that takes care of that item, and all other outstanding items have been, um, completed.
And what's the minimum, uh...
You just be looking for a bond reduction?
Yeah, see that?
Yeah, it's, it's done, I don't see why we wouldn't go to zero.
Wouldn't, uh, there is a...
We're not gonna go to zero until it gets approved by the town.
Yeah, it's gotta be a town.
So there's eighty thousand dollars left in the bond for Atwood Estates.
What does Remy want for the, for the town bond till it gets? Did he say the street acceptance bond? Make sure everything works? It's usually like ten thousand that you hang on to for a couple of years, once it's accepted and that's it.
So we can either do half or we can do ten, whatever the board would like to do.
Is the manhole?
The manhole was fixed today. Rennie, Carol, the Highway Superintendent, was out to the site and did inspect the manhole, and it is to his satisfaction.
Didn't the council accept it last night as well?
And the Board of Selectmen did, um, approve the laying out of the way, contingent upon the, the recommendation of the, the planning board.
And what was the final?
We make a recommendation that we hold twenty thousand dollars until, uh, the road is accepted.
How much was that, Bob?
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand.
I agree with that, I was thinking the same thing.
Until when?
Till the road's accepted.
From the town.
Town meeting.
Town meeting, December?
December 6th.
Yeah, that's, that's reasonable.
Some, what, uh?
I'll fly it.
All right.
Or Bob can fly it, I'll second it.
I, I made a motion.
He already flew it.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That passes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um... We have an issue with, uh, Whitestone Village, use of Georgia Street for emergency. Residents have been using Georgia Street. The Georgia Street has only been for emergency access only. So, I've seen the letter, uh, Rebecca, you wanna...
Uh, so, Mr. Chair, we were, the planning department was contacted by a resident about the use of Georgia Street as a residential throughway to the development of, um, Whitestone Village in the back, specifically during the times of school pickup, um, and heavy traveled times for school street. So, um, the gentleman had expressed that this was a situation that was occurring, uh, frequently over the years, and it was something that they struggled with getting some information about in the past and working with the planning board to come to a resolution. It is something that was discussed as part of the approval process, that this particular roadway was not to be used as through travel and only for emergency access. The design tends to show otherwise with sidewalks leading up to the particular area, almost as if it's inviting cars and, and, and traffic. However, there is appropriate signage, both at the entranceway of Georgia and also entering the site from the Whitestone, I believe it's Alyssa Drive. So the gentleman is here with us this evening to speak specifically, um, to his accounts of this particular matter and the, the history of the situation, if the board so chooses to move forward and, and discuss this matter.
Right.
So who's here from Whitestone Village?
I don't think anybody.
Nobody is.
Is anyone here that lives on Whitestone Village? Was Whitestone Village notified about this?
No.
About the hearing tonight? Okay.
But they've been notified, correct?
They've been notified as the problem, but they have not been notified of the meeting.
Okay. Looking into, into this over here. So Bob, you speaking on this?
Yeah. Do you want to come to the microphone?
Who's speaking up for, uh...
What? Just Bob?
I can speak for Georgia Street.
Yeah.
All right, why don't you grab a mic? Please state your name.
Robert Lay, uh, Georgia Street.
Thank you.
Are you on it tonight?
You can just state the problem, or we're just, you can just go ahead and...
So, I think I just turned the mic off, am I right?
Green is on.
It's on.
Should be green.
Oh, green, right.
Do you want a green?
Green is good.
Green.
Okay. I approached Rebecca a few weeks ago to inform her of the problem that's on Georgia Street relative to the traffic flow. Wally, as you would re- remember, from the original special permit, we talked a lot about traffic, uh, anticipated traffic volumes, and, long story short, we came to an agreement that Georgia Street would not be used as a...
Entrance.
Entrance to, uh, to that development. And, uh, that's contained in the special permit. I've taken a, a few stabs at getting this enforced, and it's, uh, it's been a hot potato, to be quite honest with you. Nobody's really been able to get down there and say, "This is it, it has to stop, or something else needs to take place." None of that has happened. The traffic is, if you remember, uh, Wally, back in the permitting process, we talked about projected traffic volume.
Yeah.
Uh, it probably exceeds what you even thought. Uh, the traffic coming down that road is, um, it's a lot. And it's not just, you know, it's not just people living there, it's people visiting those people, it's vendors, it's contractors, it just goes on all day long, and they fly up and down the street. Um, it wasn't what we agreed to, it was never what we agreed to. And I, I would encourage the board and whoever takes, you know, enforcement action here to, to get this thing wrestled down and say, "It's gotta stop." To my impression, you correct me if I'm wrong, that restriction is actually written in their deed when they buy a home down there.
Yeah, that's what I was hoping to get somebody from Whitestone here to see what the turnover is. We've seen similar things in different, even in subdivisions where the initial, the initial holds and as soon as one person moves and goes down the line, and ten years later, nobody knows about anything.
If it's written in their deed, the attorney...
How many people read the deed?
The attorney should be going over their deed when, when they're signing that.
You, you know, we, we've, we've had this issue before. When you say pushback and hot potato recently, has there been anything? I mean, I see 2018 notes here, but I don't see anything. Can you define what that is?
I, I talked with, you know, so I talked to, it, it was unclear as to whose role it was to enforce.
Yeah.
Okay, it's, it's really not clear. And at one point, uh, when Bob O'Hanley was on the board, um, you folks went to town council, and town council, uh, wrote back, I don't have a copy of that letter, but I know there was some correspondence, and town council said, "It's pretty clear, uh, what needs to happen," and he believed it to be the role of the building inspector, um, to enforce that. Right or wrong, I do not know, but it's not been enforced. Uh, the police can't enforce it...
Right.
For a variety of reasons, but it's not, it's not their thing. And, um, just looking for a remedy here. I mean, who's...
I, I'm just saying, it's pretty hard for the building inspector to enforce it, because he'd have to sit there for twenty-four seven.
To stop traffic.
I understand that.
Well, how we...
From him, so...
How we addressed this in the past was, and it, and I'm looking for it here in the special permit, that's what I've been heads down on, i- is that one of the members of the planning board is, is assigned to the Whitestone Village Board. And I have, uh, this was my watch in '04 here. So, I have no problem going down and speaking to, if we get who the contacts are, and explain to them what's going on. And the fix last time, i- it probably worked for just a little while, is the, uh, Whitestone Village actually had to print out this restriction that you can't use it and handed it out to every single person, uh, in Whitestone Village. I, I'm assuming, since the last time we did that was probably, what, five, six years ago, that there's been a lot of turnover in Whitestone Village, and that it just, yeah, they're responsible in the closings, but guess what? That's probably way down there, um, on the list, and the ball does drop. So, um, it is in the planning board's jurisdiction on this, we are supposed to be a member of that board. And we had to do it for snow removal. I don't know if you remember, snow removal was a problem one time, and then, uh, they've come in a couple of times for, uh, you know, plantings and how that was gonna affect the parking, just other things over the years, um, down there. So, so it does need to be addressed, that is our bailing work here, it's a special permit. And, um, and I think it just needs to be a giant reminder again, because who knows if it's a Whitestone Village Board?
Do they have a, um, I, I don't, I'm gonna try to use, probably use the wrong determination, but, um, they must have a... A board.
Yeah, they do.
So, every year, maybe we could do this, is every year, they have to put out a flyer. Every person...
Yeah, that's what we did last time, yeah.
Tell them, "They have to do this every year."
Right.
To say, "All right, you cannot use Georgia Street."
They're gonna have to post it too in their own...
Well, homeowners association, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, exactly, homeowners association, that's what I was looking for.
So maybe move to, like Rebecca was talking about earlier, maybe have a letter... What's that?
Hold on, you got it over there?
Page four sixteen, I'm looking at.
Okay.
It's a special permit for the aqua protection. So, maybe, uh, draft a letter, send it to the homeowners association to start, and if they can get a representative in...
Yeah.
I, I think that'll be a start of the dialogue...
Yes.
To end what's going on in Georgia Street.
We have to send the, the friendly reminder first in the letter. "Hey, we've been notified again that you're in violation of, and so are your residents, which have to be due to be notified, you're hereby summoned to the next planning board meeting with a, with a fix, and how you're going to address this, this is not the first time, second time, or third time." I mean, I've been down there myself a few times on that.
So I, I think rather than going down there hunting them down, is it different? Send a letter and bring them in?
Yeah. Yeah, bring them in here, and then we'll see what they're doing. And you, you know, that board, you know, from '04 here, we're coming up on twenty years. You know, that board could have completely changed over down there, too. So they, they may be clueless that this even exists, except for your complaints recently. So, um, there's no excuse, though, they still gotta know what it is.
Even if the homeowners association is, you know, on board, doesn't mean it's probably gonna stop immediately. But we'll do our due diligence. I don't know how you stop the contractors...
How does the sign read coming, coming out?
I'm not sure.
But how do you stop the contractors from coming in and out? UPS, FedEx?
Well, whoever's hiring the contractors.
Those will be tough, but if it's a Whitestone contractor...
If it's a Whitestone contractor, then they have to enter their own...
Like Amazon delivery for residents.
Right. I think that's rough, you know, the packaging, delivery companies.
That's the way GPS will take them.
You know, and...
You can't, you can't...
And I did mention the gate in the beginning, because that was one of the fixes, but then it became a, a problem in southern and other areas, too. Like, we have one of these things on Stone Bridge, and we got another one on Nichols Village on the backside, and they had the gate, but they said in an emergency, "Or plowing." If we're plowing all winter long, we don't wanna go out and unlock the gate and keep the gate open and, and all that stuff. But that was one of the fixes, and if this doesn't stop and calm it down, then they're gonna have to put one in.
You can always do a...
That little section's not deemed a one-way, right?
No.
No, you couldn't, you couldn't do it one-way.
I don't think you could put a gate in there, Wally, because it's not deemed one-way, they need to access it.
But even without a gate, if it was coded as one-way, like then Google Maps won't drop you down there.
The gate would be at the entrance.
Huh?
Yeah, the gate would be at the, at the end of Georgia.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you could...
It's kinda late in the game for that, though, if we didn't do it at the beginning.
That's what I'm looking for it in here, because that was, that was one of the original things, but it came up with, with fire, for, "We gotta get out, we gotta get the keys, we gotta do this."
Well, they can just do a Knox box, you know what I mean, at the gate, I mean, right?
But if that's a fix, that's, I mean, that was what we initially intend, intended to do.
You know, quite honestly, and in my former role at the time...
Yeah.
And I weighed in on this, whether emergency vehicles access Alyssa Drive, which is what we're talking about...
Yeah.
From Georgia Street or Diane Circle, it really makes no difference. I mean, if I lived on Doris Street, would I be concerned about how far away I am from the fire station? Or Wilbert? Or Ashcroft Terrace? No. You, fire apparatus or emergency vehicles can get anywhere in this town. They don't need that road to shortcut to get to Alyssa Drive. It makes no sense. And we, we dispelled that myth during the planning sessions. It, it just didn't play out, it just doesn't make any sense.
There's no hydrants in play from one development to the other?
They... It's not a hydrant issue, they have hydrants, there's a hydrant on Georgia Street.
Well, you know that's gonna come up if this, you know...
It was a snow issue for piling, you know, for, for the emergency access.
No, you can't, to, to quote anybody, you can't un-ring the bell on this thing. It's in writing, it's in, it's a special permit. That language is in their deed, and, and I'm afraid that if you bring that homeowners association in here, which we did once in front of the selectmen, and they were pounding the table saying, "We pay taxes and got nothing to do with it." It has absolutely nothing to do with it. They agreed to this upfront during the planning process to get a special permit, that they wouldn't use that road. That's the end of it. Now it needs to be enforced. And I'd hate to see the board, now I'm not suggesting you do this, but that we all of a sudden renegotiate some part of this. This has affected my property value and everybody else in the street, I gotta tell you. You go from a six-house dead-end street to a through there, I mean, you, you couldn't count the cars. It's non-stop, it's high-speed, it's what we predicted would happen.
Is the, is the speed bump still there?
There's no speed bump. And I, a speed bump isn't a solution. The solution is, you know, and we had the, the management company, I believe they're out of puberty, you probably have the name of who they are, they were in on this, the homeowners association was in on this. We, we've had these kinds of discussions before, people are dragging their feet at, down at Alyssa Drive, they, they don't like it, they wanna use the road. It's not the agreement. It just, very simply, it's not the agreement.
Number thirty-eight in the special permit. So, so how about a motion to, uh, send a letter to the, to the Whitestone Village homeowners association, uh, with a cut and paste of thirty-eight, which is exit only. We've been receiving complaints, this needs to be addressed immediately. Summon you to the next planning board meeting and advise the board what your solution was. And I still think that i- if we get blowback on this, or this keeps going, um, they're putting a gate in.
Well, what's...
Because it's the only way to do it.
Page thirteen, well, it's pretty much spelled out right there.
Right.
As John said.
And that's, and I do remember specifically the pros and cons on the gate. It was the snow, um, that the guys with the plows, um, that if it was too deep of a snow, they weren't sure if, you know, they couldn't, sometimes can't see it, they would have plowed it, they would have hit it. But this has been going on, I mean, this is '03.
Well, if it comes to the gate, which it hasn't come to yet, I mean, then we can sit down with Rennie and... If they have to bring a loader in and, you know, I, I don't know how far we wanna get into this. I think we bring the homeowners association in first.
Sure.
And I think we send a letter, and we start it that way, and if...
I will second the motion of the letter, and bring in the homeowners association.
Fly the motion.
And, um, give them a tongue-washing.
You good with that?
From there.
Yeah, letter, bring them in, and...
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, just, if you have to bring them in, bring them in with a solution in hand, because this is not the first time. Now, I don't know if it's the same management company, do you know?
Think it is.
Okay.
Believe it is.
So they've been...
They've been, uh...
Well aware of this. Yeah, this is, this has been, uh, several times that we've had to bring this issue up. Um, and it's, and it appears that they're not doing their due diligence when the new people move in. Should be a separate sheet of paper, "Thou shall not use Georgia Street for in and out." The only problem is the site distance, which was, we flagged, coming up Georgia in and out of there, isn't what it was designed for, that's why the entrance was moved down the road.
Correct.
Yeah.
All right, then, I'll fly a motion that we, um, motion to send the homeowners association of Whitestone Village a letter of, uh, first of all...
It was already, the, uh, motion was already on the table.
Yeah.
It was seconded, so all we need is to say aye, I think.
Yeah, can we, you put in the letter, put in the enforcement of, uh, special permit, the date, and, uh, item thirty-eight.
Yep, we can add a friendly amendment to that, yes.
To cease all traffic from Whitestone to through Georgia, and vice versa. And still bring them in for a planning board meeting, just to make sure they're all, they're all on board.
Okay, I will, I know we're searching for a solution, but I'll just add one thing to this, that my, one of my neighbors at the end of the street, his concern with enforcement is, so the cars come down, they see the sign, they turn around in his driveway and go back up the street. That's not a solution either. It needs to never get to that.
Right, that's it.
And if there needs to be a turnaround, quite honestly, it needs to be in the Whitestone property. There's land, they could build a turnaround if it had to come to that, to turn around and get out, but not, "I'm gonna play through here today."
You know, at the beginning of, of Georgia.
Georgia, yeah. Do not enter unless you're a resident only.
Residents of Georgia.
Signs there, the signs there, they, they, believe me, I'm gonna tell you something.
It's too small.
They know, they all know. You don't, you'd have to be... You'd have to be blind to drive in that street and see a sign here and a sign here that says, "You can't do this." So they know. Don't you think if you lived there, you'd say, "Gee, I just bought a, just bought a condo, and I see this sign that says I can't come in here." Oh, that's languages like what's in my deed, but it doesn't matter, my neighbors tell me, "Don't worry about it, because it's not enforced." That's what's going on here.
The white signs?
Yep.
Trying to get some colors. Have the management company put those up in colors, so they don't look the same either, so they're... The big bright signs.
Orange?
Orange, yeah, or the yellow, the big yellows, I mean, make them bigger, they obviously can't see them. So, we'll, we'll get to the bottom of that, but, yeah, thank you. So, do we fly that?
Yeah, we've, we have a motion.
All in favor, or you call the vote?
A second.
I second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you, sorry for the, uh...
Thank you.
Disturbance down there. Thank the residents for us, though.
I will.
Okay.
We've had some turnover, too, so, got nothing to do with it, but it needs to stop.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up on the agenda is, uh, public hearing. New inclusion of affordable housing special permit, King Meadow Farm, Katie Lane. King Meadow Development pursuant to Section fifty dash ten point one, Town of Groveland zoning bylaw. We're requesting an inclusion of affordable housing special permit for a nine-lot subdivision labeled as King Meadow Farm, Katie Lane. Site is located in residential R2 zoning district. The proposed subdivision loaded, located at 106 King Street, Groveland Mass, assesses map twenty-six parcel thirteen and map twenty-six parcel thirteen F.
Mr. Chair, if I may start off, um, this is the definitive subdivision and stormwater management and land disturbance application that was reviewed by the board currently and approved by the board, in writing the decision and in going through the process with the, um, owner's attorney, we recognized that, um, the special permit was not filed correctly for the inclusionary housing in order to abide by, um, the bylaw, and therefore, they had decided to, um, make sure that it was done correctly and filed an application after their approval. So the standard language that you typically find in your definitive subdivision applications is actually now in a standalone decision to be included as part of the original approval. Uh, the applicant and his attorney are here this evening. They have decided to make a payment in lieu of, and the calculation that has been utilized for the last couple of developments is still standard, so that language is what you'll find in the, um, drafted decision before you.
And what was that total number?
I believe it was...
Two thirty-four?
It's one hundred and eight thousand dollars or eighty thousand dollars, whichever is lower.
Is that broken up by the, so what was the total number? Was it eighty or one?
To pay eighty thousand.
So the way that the calculation works is that it is based off of the, um, market rate...
Right, yeah.
Of the house, and then what is affordable, uh, via the AMI for this particular area.
Mm-hmm.
And then it's fifty percent of the difference between the affordable price and the market rate price, which would be the hundred and eight, and the bylaw provides payment will be fifty percent of the difference between the affordable price and market price, right, uh, rate price or eighty thousand dollars, whichever is lower. At least that's how it reads in the bylaw itself.
So my, my reading is right, that it's gonna be eighty?
It's just one payment of eighty, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So how are you gonna, on the payment of the eighty, typically it's, if you're doing it by the eight remaining lots?
My clients will adhere to whatever the schedule you, is in the bylaw, and if it's prior to a, you know, a given occupancy permit, we'll, we'll meet that requirement.
It's usually, um, it's half down, so if you divide it up, ten per house, so it's five at the permit, five at the closing per lot, so it'll be ten per lot, eight houses, eighty. Is that what you're calculating?
Yeah, I don't see a big, but to kick it down the road if I was a gentleman.
Yeah, I don't know.
Then I'd put the five up.
Yeah?
Yeah, that way if one sells before the other, unless you wanna pay it all at once. I mean, that's great too, but.
No, we appreciate the, the schedule.
Does he got a briefcase next to him?
I wish.
Doesn't go to us, unfortunately.
So, yeah, so we don't have the problem that we had in the past?
Right. Yeah, and that's the way it's always been. You go to get the building permit, half goes down. And because they get their money at the closing, when, when you go to the, get the OC, that's when you pay the other part. So. You want a motion to endorse the, the?
Well, it's, I just wanna make sure that that's, um, the way the board wants to, you know, put that out there.
Yeah, that's the way it's always been.
I think it's been, yeah.
I'm okay with that. I just didn't know if any discussion was necessary.
Well, I think it was fair to the builder because you don't have to come up with 80 all at once, but it's also fair to the town to say, "You're not gonna get that OC unless it's paid." We did have that little problem recently.
There is a schedule that's
The OC comes before the closing, that's all.
There, there is a schedule in the bylaw.
We're working on it.
There is a
Based, there is a schedule that's listed in the bylaw specifically, and I cite that as part of the, um, the decision that it must abide by the schedule as depicted under section 50-10-1F5. And it's based upon the rate of market housing already constructed within the site so that it's not just you're saving your affordables for the last moment.
No, it's per unit, yeah.
Per unit, that I think.
Right.
Is that how you understand it?
I'll make the motion.
I think it's reasonable.
Do the payments.
The five at the issue of the permit.
Issue at the permit and
Five at the, before the occupancy permit.
Yeah.
So, you're gonna wanna, if you could make the motion to reflect that language? Sorry.
Which one is that?
50 dash.
The whole thing.
Yeah. Yeah.
50 dash 10, that's one.
Yeah, it's up to them.
Yeah, five.
The owner should buy.
I'll make an approval.
No, no, no. 51, 50 dash 10, I mean, 11, 10.18 for the zoning bylaws. How's that? Instead of reading the whole, is that okay?
I, I think we got it, that's right.
So, yeah, so we approve, right. The owner should abide by the under the depicted section of, well, hold, we, we can fly the motion and put it under, you know, shall abide by the schedule depicted by, under section 50-10.1F5.
Right. You're just gonna wanna make sure that you, you, um, mention the calculation.
Yeah. So, the calculation is 80,000 total? Okay. And then the schedule is, um, it's gonna be half down for the pulling of the building bid on the eight remaining lots? Okay? And then, uh, the final payment at the OC issue?
Well, well, we can do, we can do 5% of the difference between the affordable price and the market rate of 450, that's 450,000, would be 108. As a result, this bylaw provides a payment will be 50% of the difference between the affordable price and the market rate or $80,000, whichever is lower. And back to the owner shall abide by the schedule as depicted under section 50-10.1F5.
F5.
Is that perfect?
Done, okay.
Okay. So, motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, gentlemen.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Somebody get the original? Or are you gonna reprint it?
I have the original right there.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That was easy. We're in a tide today.
Thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
All right.
What's new in selectmen world, anything?
Nope.
Well, I, there's a couple of things that I wanna
Oh, good.
Got a signature there. So, Bob has handed me his resignation. Please accept my resignation to the planning board as the end of tonight's meeting on 11/9/2021. Bob D'Enfro. We really don't wanna take it, but I wish you the best.
I just have a lot going on with the schools and everything else, so.
You're still doing work for the town, so thank you for your service.
Correct.
To the town.
Anytime you wanna come back, Bob.
Yes.
Chair will be open.
I'm sure.
You know, we're gonna be losing a
It's a pleasure, it's a pleasure serving and glad I could help. And hope I didn't make too many enemies.
We can't count them.
Yeah.
So, the other, we wish you, wanna wish Rebecca the best in her new position, running the town of Groveland.
Yes, well, I will not be far, and we will transition accordingly as we had discussed. So, we will be posting the position, and then once we're able to get somebody to fill the seat, we'll have them in, and I'll be working very close with, closely with them to make sure that you're in good hands and everything is good to go.
Pretty good. That is true. It's hard to replace yourself with yourself.
Oh, thank you very much. It has been a pleasure working with you all, and I can't wait to work with you all in my new capacity.
So, that means we're actually allowed into that corner office now?
I don't know, I'd have to be allowed first.
Does that mean we're gonna get more funding?
I don't think so. I think our funding is gone, so that's why we have Jason tonight. We can rattle him later. But, um, so, motion to close the meeting?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.